At this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Present.
Commissioner Bodak.
Present.
Commissioner Garretson.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Lyon.
Present.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri-Muded.
Here.
And Chairman Granados.
Here.
Chairman, please let the record reflect mine commissioners in attendance for this evening's agenda-setting session.
Thank you. Clerk of the Board, please read a statement of compliance. Clerk of the Board, please lead us in prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and love her of charity to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Clerk of the Board, please read the Statement of Compliance with Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first presentation is in reference to recognizing individuals who volunteer and help out in the efforts of our Point in Time Count. That's an annual count and survey of the homeless population. Teams of Union County staff, government officials, and local nonprofit organizations joined together during a seven-day period in the morning, afternoon, and evening hours to look for unsheltered individuals. They surveyed throughout Elizabeth, Plainfield, Summit, Roselle, Roselle Park, Garwood, Linden, Raway, Hillside, and Union. During the overnight count, 33 volunteers gathered at Social Services in Elizabeth and Plainfield. The five groups identified 14 unsheltered homeless persons that were further assessed for services at the Union County Department of Human Services Division of Social Services. Over 200 adult and children were provided shelter throughout the county's Code Blue Program. The group also provided materials for the homeless, including blankets, coats, clothing, toiletries, socks, hats, gloves, sandwiches, provided by B. The Change from King University, scarves, soup provided by Mo's Cafe and Hot Coffee. Daytime service fairs were held by the City of Plainfield and the Plainfield Action Services at the Plainfield Performing Arts Center, and the Elizabeth Coalition to House the Homeless at the Mickey Walker Center in Elizabeth. Plainfield Service Fair had a total of 61 persons in attendance, and Elizabeth Service Fair had a total of 279 individuals in attendance. Both service fairs offered resources from over 18 social service providers across the County of Union. During the evening hours from 8:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. throughout the seven days, five groups went out and identified an additional 24 individuals. At this time, I'll need to call upon Vice Chair Palmieri-Muded, County Manager Ed Oatman, Deputy County Manager Wagner, Director Anderson, and Project Coordinator Taplosky, who participated in this Point in Time Count, to join me up front.
Thank you, everyone. So, we want to recognize a few people today. The first person that we're going to be recognizing is Police Officer Michael Martinez from the Plainfield Police Department. Okay, the next person we're going to recognize is George Vessels from Bridgway. Okay, the next person we're going to recognize is Chanel Buckles from Bridgway as well. The next person we're going to recognize is from the City of Elizabeth, Cheryl Adam-Rahaman.
Abdurrahman.
Abdurrahman, sorry. Also from the City of Elizabeth, Hassan Abdar. There we go, I'm sorry.
Hassan Abdurrahman.
Next, also from the City of Elizabeth is Haja. Haja.
Haja Abdurrahman. They run together in a family over here. That's the way we like to see it volunteering.
Put me on the spot, too. The next person we're going to recognize is Anjay Bryant. Organization for Recovery. Next, from Proceed Inc., is Serbanti Sakar. Next, from the Gateway Family YMCA here in Elizabeth, Jasmine Shaw. Next, from the Salvation Army here in Elizabeth, Janelle Billings. Janine, sorry. I'm butchering everyone's name tonight, I apologize. And last, from the Salvation Army here in Elizabeth, is Danisha Claude-Bern.
I just want to again thank all of you. Of course, we're focusing on this particular Point in Time program, but what you do for our community day in and day out makes a difference. We recognize it, we see it. I was humbled, I know my colleagues here were humbled, to join you in the Point in Time program, and just thank you for all you do for all of our residents of Union County. You make everyone believe that they count. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready? One, two, no pressure, three. Thanks, got it.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Our second presentation is part of the Union County Vocational Technical Schools here in Union County. Each year, we look forward to February, when we recognize National Career and Technical Education Month in Union County. At this time of year, we express our appreciation for the career high schools that the Union County Vocational Technical School District belongs to. Before speaking, I'll also like to acknowledge members of VOTEC Administration, Gwen Ryan, Superintendent, President Perkins of the VOTEC Board of Education, and Kenneth Burham, Business Administrator. Let's give them a big round of applause for everything doing running the administration. But now, we talk about the students who make sure that our VOTEC schools are second to none in the State of New Jersey. It's because of each one of you. Throughout the years, our VOTEC students have brought many honors to our community. That includes national recognition by the Blue Ribbon School Program, Newsweek, and U.S. News, and World Report, along with many other state and national awards. We're very proud of our VOTEC students, and we truly appreciate their hard work and dedication to excellence. And we thank the teachers, staff, parents, caregivers, volunteers, who all work together to make VOTEC a jewel in the crown and a source of great pride for all of us. At this time, I'd like to call upon Superintendent Ryan, please.
Okay, so I guess I'm just going to have the T Students, our Teacher Education Academy Students, stand up here on the left, and then all the students that are here for recognition to just come up and stand in front here. I'd like to introduce you all to the Board of County Commissioners. Maybe just stand against the... Yep, that's good. Okay, so while they're headed up here, just good evening, Commissioners. We're really grateful to be here this evening to celebrate Career and Technical Education Month, and, you know, I have some pretty exciting things and some pretty incredible students to introduce to you this evening. So, I just first want to take a minute to acknowledge our Board of Education President Gene Perkins for being here again, and our principals and some of our administrative staff who are here, so I'm just going to ask you to stand up and give a wave. They're pretty incredible, and the work that they do every day makes our entire school district look good, so I thank them for their work. So, some specific examples from each of our schools of how we celebrate Career and Technical Education Month. And this is in addition to the general kinds of things like bulletin board decorating and having, you know, announcements in the morning that are dedicated to recognizing individuals in each of their career fields among a variety of guest speakers and that kind of thing. And I'm realizing I need my glasses, because I can't see the words in front of me. So, some specific examples of what that is from each of our schools. At the Academy for Allied Health Sciences, Dr. Nalika Gulati is a dental... She's a dentist, and she is coming to talk about dental careers, and she happens to be an alumni, or I guess it's an alumna, of the Academy for Allied Health Sciences. At the Academy for Performing Arts, artists are going to come, guests, artists are going to come and share their experiences, and their specialized techniques with students. At the Magnet High School for Science, Mathematics, and Technology, we have an alumnus coming to talk to students about engineering, and he works for the United States Department of Transportation. At UC Tech, Mr. Lerner sent me a list that was about two pages long of all the things that are going on there, but specifically, I'd just like to mention that they have in the Sustainable Science Program, because we'll hear from about some of those students in a little bit, that they are taking a field trip to the Adventure Aquarium in Camden, and they're going to work with scientists on different research components and techniques. So, and then also want to recognize the Union County Career and Technical Institute. This, actually, I think it was today, a local pizzeria was coming to the culinary arts classroom and the baking in the supermarket, so that they could demonstrate techniques of baking a pizza. So, they were pretty excited for that. This is just a few examples of a lot of things that are happening at UC VTS for the month of February. As the Commissioner Chairman mentioned, our schools are exceptional, and we've, you know, received many awards and distinctions, and I just want to take a moment to say that our successes are the result of the support that we receive from the Commissioner Board, and of course, our Board of Education. So, tonight, in celebration of Career and Technical Education Month, we have a number of students here who make us proud every single day, and it will be my pleasure to introduce them to you. And then we have a bit of a special presentation over here, too, from our Teacher Education Students. So, these students, I'm just going to ask you to kind of give a wave to the Commissioner Board when I introduce you. So, first one I have is Mauricio Sanchez. Okay, so Mauricio is a Magnet High School junior from Elizabeth. He's a 22-23 New Jersey Governor STEM Scholar, and he's currently working on research at Rutgers University on using artificial intelligence to analyze railroad trespassing events. So, next, I'd like to introduce Cole. Next, I'd like to introduce Cole Duhaime. He is an AIT senior from Westfield. Okay, so Cole is a student in AIT's Business Management and Administration Program, and he's also an AP Capstone candidate. The literature reviews he wrote last year were titled "Barriers to Voting for Disabled Americans" and "The Impact of Coronavirus Lockdowns on Adolescents," and they were recently published in the Journal for Student Research. I'd like to next introduce Diamond Prevalon. Is Diamond here? Ah, she's over there with her... Our T Students. So, Diamond is a sophomore student at the Teacher Education Academy, which is a part of the Union County Vocational Technical High School, which we affectionately call UC Tech. She is a New Jersey Future Educator Association State Officer. That's their Career and Technical Student Organization, and she recently represented UC Tech at the Winter Conference at the College of New Jersey in January. It's a big responsibility. So, next, I'd like to introduce Ivan Lu, over there on the end. So, Ivan is a senior at the Academy for Allied Health Sciences and is from Linden. Ivan is currently serving as the President of the Union County Vocational Technical Schools Chapter of HOSA, which is Health Occupation Student Organization, and he's taking EMT through the Academy for Allied Health Sciences partnership with Union College. So, by the end of this school year, he will have earned his EMT certification. Next student I'd like to introduce is Jordan White. Jordan is a senior from Hillside, and he is in AIT's, again, Business Management and Administration Program. As an active member of the Chapter of FBLA, Jordan will be representing UC VTS at the FBLA State Leadership Conference again this year. It's the second time he's done that, and having recently placed second at regionals in the category of securities and investments. Next, I'd like to introduce Sanaya Licorish. Okay, so Sanaya is an AIT senior from Cranford. She is also a student who attends the Academy for Information Technology. She's been selected for a coveted internship at UC VTS in our IT department, so we have a few students every year that get selected for these positions, and they provide Level One tech support for our entire campus, for students and staff. Next, I'd like to introduce Caitlin Miranda. Caitlin is a senior, she was also last month's Student of the Month, so she was with us at our Board of Education meeting as well. She's a senior dance major at the Academy for Performing Arts and is from Elizabeth. This year, Caitlin is very busy as the only biology intern at UC VTS, and as an award-winning HOSA member, which again, kind of speaks towards all of the different activities that she's involved in, she's an ensemble member for the musical Chicago, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about that in a minute, and a participant in the New Jersey Governor STEM Scholars Program, where she is now working on research for COVID treatments. Next, I'd like to introduce Elizabeth Coizumi. She's over on this slide. So, Elizabeth is a sophomore student at the Teacher Education Academy, again, a part of UC Tech, and she's from Fanwood. She's an extremely positive presence in each of her classes, and her teachers and principal describe her as extremely, an extremely positive presence in each of her classes, always adds thoughtful responses to class discussions. She's able to achieve a high level of academic success while also being actively involved in a wide variety of extracurricular activities. And then I have some additional students, but for the students that we're recognizing for Career and Technical Education Month, the last student I'd like to introduce is Trajan Benjamin. Is Trajan here? Over here, okay. Trajan is a sophomore at the Teacher Education Academy. She's from Plainfield. Trajan is a dynamic leader in her academy, both inside and outside of the classroom. She is currently part of the Secondary Chapter of the National Honor Society for the Dance Arts, and hopes to go into politics and advocate for creative education through the arts. Okay, so you may have noticed that there's a lot of Teacher Education Academy students here from UC Tech with us this evening, and I'd like to introduce more of our incredible students from T. As future teachers, administrators, and educational leaders, it gives me great confidence in the future of our educational system when I hear and learn about each one of these students and the work that they're doing at UC Tech. So, in addition to, I know that, you know, you've all been very gracious in recognizing our students and our programs, but they have a message that they would like to say to all of you. So, I would like to introduce, in addition to the T Students that were already recognized this evening, I would also like to introduce Rebecca Lacerda. Rebecca is a ninth-grade student from Scotch Plains. Sophia Kudo. Sophia is a ninth-grade student from Union. Natalia Prasner is a ninth-grade student from Clark. Sabella Torres is a 10th-grade student from Roselle. Abigail Noriega is a 10th-grade student from Fanwood. Jasmine Varas is a 10th-grade student from Linden. And I just wanted to make note, too, at your seats, there's a few things, they're going to talk to you about what that is, but one of the things that's there is a list of all these fantastic young people and some bios. I only took small blurbs of them, and you'll be super impressed when you look at all the list of their accomplishments and things that they're involved with. So, I'd like to introduce our T Students to make a short presentation.
Good evening, Union County Commissioners, students, parents, and everyone else with us here today. We, students from the Teacher Education Academy from Union County Vocational Technical Schools, would like to warmly thank the Commissioners for all the contributions and dedications they have made to our school and dedicated students. We want to show you our appreciation and gratitude through this speech, along with the gifts you have been given. Without you, our inspiring, generous leaders, we would not be able to experience the reality of our future careers, deepen our knowledge, and have the opportunities we have at UC VTS.
As students at UC VTS, not only can we be hands-on learners and do work-based activities, but the school provides us the necessary resources and tools needed to be proficient in our futures. With these resources, we already have experience and knowledge to succeed at the highest level in our careers. As students in the Teacher Education Academy, our resources may look different, but we do practice making lesson plans and getting involved in group discussions. We get to be hands-on learners and fully develop the skills that we need to succeed.
At UC VTS, we learn hard skills that prepare us for life outside of the classroom. In our many academies at UC VTS, students have the opportunity to learn technical skills, such as classroom management, lighting design, networking, CPR, engineering, CAD design, and more. Having this specialized knowledge and expertise in different fields gives us career guidance and a strong foundation for college. Our teachers are actively teaching us these skills to take and use independently in the real world. I have gained many hands-on experiences and opportunities at UC VTS, and now I am able to turn my passions into a career.
Mastering these technical skills isn't our only goal at this school. Another large focus of UC VTS is the development and improvement of soft skills. At this school, we evolve many of these skills, such as communication, problem-solving, time management, leadership, responsibility, and countless more. These soft skills are developed through the technical skills that we master and the relationships we have with our fellow peers and educators. For this, I'm extremely grateful to have a school that implements these skills in all of their assignments, so that we are equipped for our future.
Through career and technical education, students are not only learning, but guiding their education as well. There is always space for creativity and flexibility in the classrooms. The voices of students are prioritized over all instruction. We learn most effectively because our feedback, whether personal or academic, is valued and applied. For some classes, learning by class discussion is most effective, while in other classes, we prefer to work alone. A CTE education provides us the opportunity to work with teachers who are willing to adapt to the necessary needs in the classroom. It isn't a teacher feeding information, but a teacher working with students to reach a common goal.
The Teacher Education Academy at UC VTS has provided its students with multiple beneficial opportunities. We have been lucky enough to have the opportunity to attend conferences with other future educators. We have learned about the current and best practices in the teaching field, and we have also had the opportunity to complete hands-on experiences. Finally, all of our learning will lead us to completing our senior year of high school as students at King University. King University is known for its excellent variety of programs, and it is amazing that high school students have this opportunity. UC VTS has every student's future in mind throughout their education, and we are preparing them for their next chapter in life.
At UC VTS, we have been given numerous opportunities to experience, learn, and teach ourselves, as well as others, the importance of culture. Here, we have cultivated a space where we can openly and productively discuss difficult topics while still staying true to our individuality. This is nurtured through CTSOs such as the Black Student Union, Happy Black History Month, the Women in Leadership Club, Happy Future Women's History Month, and Multicultural Club. Well, there's a list for that. My peers and I cannot thank the Commissioners enough for providing us with the funds, resources, and overall opportunity to expand our knowledge and views, not only as students, but as people.
Particularly at UC VTS, our world's views and perspectives are constantly expanding. We are provided the opportunity to connect with people from various backgrounds, whether that be students from different towns, ethnicities, and socioeconomic statuses. For me, as a future educator, my experience at UC VTS has better prepared me to confront my own biases and show compassion. This opportunity would not be possible without the major contributions the Board of Commissioners has made to our school.
For this, we want to show our appreciation for the gifts you see in front of you that are influenced and inspired by our career in technical education. This education provides us with work-based learning, technical skills, and interpersonal skills needed for future success. It also provides us with the chance to take ownership of our education, experience incredible opportunities, and see many perspectives while forming our own. We wouldn't gain these skills and opportunities anywhere else. We, students of Union County Vocational Technical Schools, want to thank you for all this work you have given to our career in technical education to benefit our present and future.
See what I mean? Future, future of our education system right there. Okay, so Mrs. Jelnella was back there probably shooting daggers at me when I didn't recognize the Academy for Information Technology when I gave examples, so I wanted to actually expand on something, and just to let everybody know that that February, of course, is Career and Technical Education Month, and it is also Black History Month. So, I wanted to acknowledge that all of the schools in their work have intertwined both career and technical education and different things that are happening with respect to Black History Month, and specifically, we have a member of our technology team who is going to come and speak at the Academy for Information Technology, speak to our students about his experiences in a career in IT and computer science, and share that in a field where, you know, individuals are historically underrepresented. So, I wanted to make that connection as well, and I didn't forget you. Maybe saving the best for last? Okay, all right. So, I'm a numbers person, so in closing, I just wanted to provide you with some numbers that I thought you might find of interest. The Union County Vocational Technical Schools now serves 2,200 students, more than that actually, who come from every community in Union County through our nine schools, which consist of five full-time career academies, shared time and transition programs, an adult education high school, continuing education programs, and two alternative high schools, which respectively serve out-of-school youth, for those in the audience who may not know, and also students who are recovering from substance abuse. UC VTS has seen 6,129 students graduate from our programs in the last 10 years alone. Thank you for providing the foundation and these opportunities for our students and to the community of Union County. That's your successes that allowed all of those 6,129 students to graduate. We hope that you enjoy reading through some of the things that are in these boxes, so I just kind of wanted to make note that the boxes were in fact created by students at the Makerspace in the Engineering High School. So, you know, with great pleasure, you know, we give, you know, some expressions of gratitude from our student body to all of you.
At this time, I would like to call upon Commissioners who are part of the UC VOTEC School Board of Estimates, Commissioner Rebecca Williams, Commissioner Dr. Angela Garrettson, and Commissioner Joseph Bodak, to do the presentation.
Amazing, amazing, amazing. But it truly takes the villages, the teachers, educators, staff members at UC VOTEC who make sure this happens, and Commissioner Williams, want to say something?
I'm just, well, I'm actually an educator. I'm a college professor at Essex County College in Newark, so I'm very gratified that Superintendent Ryan sees a future in education and sees the importance of it, and I'm glad that you guys are inspired to teach, because I'll tell you, there is nothing, nothing more rewarding, even when it gets a little frustrating. So I just wanted to say congratulations to you all.
Farmers of America Week in Union County. This program encourages students to begin a successful career in agriculture, and it's headed up by Sustainable Science Instructor Joanne Kobnowski? Knoblock, sorry, Knoblock, complete butchered that, I apologize. It combines hands-on experience with knowledge of global food systems, natural resources, and the role of science and technology in our food supply. The Commissioner Board is a strong supporter of educating students about food systems through hands-on learning, such as our Union County Kids Dig and Garden Grant Program. Perhaps one day, some of these individuals will be our future farmers here in Union County and throughout the state. And that is my great pleasure to want to call, call upon Gwen Ryan, Superintendent.
So we had a few students standing up here before. We didn't forget about them, they're just part of the FFA presentation, so I'd ask you to come up along with Instructor Mrs. Knoblock, please. So as Commissioner Chairman said, each year UC VTS celebrates National FFA Week, which this year is February 18th through the 25th. It's an organization, the Future Farmers of America, where members develop their potential for premier leadership and personal growth. They do so through creativity and innovation. So they're preparing right now for a variety of spring conferences and competitions that they're going to compete in, and I know they're going to come back with lots of awards, they do every single year, so we look hearing about all those successfalls, and I just wanted to, you know, quickly know, I'm going to introduce her in a minute, but the Instructor Joanna Knoblock does an excellent job with these students and everything that they do. So from the UC VTS FFA, chapter of UC VTS, this evening we have with us Josephine Taglia Lavor, Taglia Lavor. So Josephine is an 11th grade student from Roseau Park who attends the Sustainable Sciences Program at UC Tech. She's an exemplary student who has exceeded every expectation, working diligently, not only to learn, earn excellent grades, but also an inspiring and active member of the UC Tech community. In the FFA, she has played an integral part in our chapter's success this year through her committee work. She's also an FFA State Officer, which is a pretty big deal, and we had a number of state officers and organizations introduced tonight. Finally, she's represented our school at state leadership and career development competitions at the Youth Sustainability Summit. Okay, so next I'd like to introduce Macy Shimko. Macy is an 11th grade student from Scotch Plains, who also attended, attends our Sustainable Science Program and is a part of UC Tech. She's described as being "very smart, hard-working student who works tirelessly to achieve excellent grades." Macy is also an active member of the student body, school ambassador, she's an officer of the Union County FFA. Through the FFA, Macy has completed in state leadership competitions that focus on career development, and is a great collaborator. She's full of kindness and full of positivity. So it's also my pleasure to introduce to you Mrs. Joanna Knoblock. She is a lead instructor at the School of Sustainable Sciences. In fact, she teaches all of the sustainable science classes, outside of some of the general requirements that they have. Students, a part of this program, do a number of activities, they participate in a wide variety of hands-on learning, authentic learning experiences. Mr. Lerner helped me with this, but they have experiences with our in-vessel anaerobic digester, so they use that actually, you know, when it's up in, you know, in full functioning, they will take scraps from the cafeteria and they will use it to produce sustainable material. So she happens to also be our FFA advisor, where students participate in all these activities that we talked about, so it's my pleasure to introduce them to all of you as well.
I'd like to want to call the UC VOTEC Board of Estimates Commissioners to join me up front, please.
Mr. Chairman, while you're assembling, I just want to say one quick thing, so both my children went to AIT, and he had a lot of accomplishments, my son Alex, in wrestling mad, and in school, and now in business, and one of the things he's most proud of is his fourth-place finish in turf management for FFA. Thank you.
I'm Commissioner Garrettson, on behalf of our Chair, the Superintendent, the Advisor, I think you did an immaculate job of introducing these amazing students, so congratulations to you. You have to turn around and show everybody kind of your jackets, though, because it's kind of, it's a little fly, so we want to thank you for the hard work that you do, and thank you so much. Congratulations.
Let's give another big round of applause to UC VOTEC. We know that tomorrow's a school night, so for any individuals who might want to take their exit now, you're more than welcome to.
Get out while you can.
Thank you, thank you. At this time, I will also acknowledge members of B. The Change for their tremendous efforts in providing sandwiches and other materials to individuals who are attending our shelters and who are homeless, so thank you very much, let's give them a big round of applause, thank you. At this time, we'll move on. Office of Union County Clerk, County Clerk Joanne Verjapi.
Good evening, everyone. What an amazing group of students, huh? I think I saw some future public officials there. The Office of the County Clerk has two resolutions for your consideration tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions from the Commissioner Board? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Department of Economic Development, Deputy County Manager Wagner.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Department of Economic Development has three resolutions for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any Commissioners have any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Department of Engineering, Public Works and Facilities Management, Director Braziano.
Evening, Chairman, good evening Commissioners. I have 10 resolutions on for your consideration, and I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board?
Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner Baker?
Yes, I'd like to ask the Director, to just give, I have two, two, two questions on two different resolutions.
Yes, sir.
Starting with number three, the, with this has to do with the change order, if you could, you know, describe the, that, you know, the change order, what that's all about.
Yes, this is, there's some additional conduit that's needed to relocate some lighting on the Gordon Street Bridge on the front side from public service, so we had to redo that work, and so this is the change order for that work. Don't forget, this is funded by NJDOT on this project, this isn't our funding, so we are just, we're just a pass-through on this. So we are, you know, we're overseeing the project with, with other engineers, but this, we're not paying for the project, but this change order is through, for PSENG.
Okay. Excuse me, resolution number five.
Yes.
If you could, does that mean road resurfacing in, in general, or specific areas?
This is our annual road resurfacing project. For 2024, we have about 18 miles, I believe, in that, in that program, so this is the design and engineering of that. So there are roads throughout different townships within the county.
Okay, all right.
And this is also including guide rails, or guardrails on those projects as well. Something new we added to the project.
Okay. All right, thank you, Director.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kwaski?
He asked my question, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you very much, Director.
Thank you, Chair.
Director Anderson of Department of Human Services.
Good evening, Chair, Members of the Board. The Department of Human Services has 13 resolutions on, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Commissioner Baker?
Just one, just one, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Number, number four, resolution number four, I just need to understand, the Community Access Unlimited, this, their shelter home, which is state-mandated for Union County, could you explain that, what that is?
Sure, Community Access manages the youth shelter for Union County, so it's for court-adjicated youth. We're contracted with them for four beds, but in 2022, there was a number of youth that was assigned, that's, so on a monthly, six to eight beds were utilized, so that's where the increase have been, but they are the ones that manage the youth shelter for court-adjicated youth.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No question, Commissioner, any other questions? Director, just to reference to number two and number three, I see it's revenue generating, revenue generating agreements, can you elaborate on that, please?
Sure. Number two, number three, and also number one, the Sage Elder Care, so we pick up the clients to go to Adult Daycare in Summit through a paratransit system, and they pay the county for those resources. In, in Rhodes Opportunity for the Intellectual Disabled Clients, we pick them up, take them to work, bring them back to their group homes, and through paratransit, and Bridgeway Rehab, it's also for clients that are in service that do not drive but need transportation to go through and back and forth to get, receive mental health services.
Thank you very much, Director. Commissioner Leon?
Hi. Number nine, the translation, can you elaborate on that?
Sure, we are seeking to contract with a program called Voice. It is different from the language line, because it is more of a technology-based, we have iPads, that we are able to communicate with a live individual, not over the phone, but live, and they have over 250 languages. The top three languages that we're seeing from the department is Spanish Creole and Arabic, so we are in need of those resources.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
From Department of Parks and Recreation, Director Victoria Durbin-Drake.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The Department has three items for your review tonight, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Seeing none, thank you very much, Director.
Thank you, Chair.
Department of Public Safety, Director Andrew Moran.
Good evening, Chair, Members of the Board. Department of Public Safety has three resolutions for your consideration, I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Can you elaborate on number two, please?
Yes, sir. UAWC supports a regional search and rescue team, includes the Elizabeth Fire Department in, in Union County, but really, it's fire departments from around the UAWC region, and we hold one major exercise a year. We hire this consultant to help us with the logistics of setting up a, a large-scale operation like that, evaluating it, identifying gaps in our response.
Thank you very much, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Director.
Thank you.
Office of the County Manager, County Manager Ed Omen.
Thank you, Chairman, I have one item on tonight's agenda, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Seeing none, thank you. At this time, Commissioner-sponsored resolutions are from the entire board, are there any comments from my colleagues regarding any of the Commissioner-sponsored resolutions? Just one notation for myself, in reference to number four, in reference to Locata, our liaison to Locata is Commissioner James Baker, so I'd appreciate that coming from Commissioner James Baker and the entire board.
Chairman, thank you, I'll make that change and ensure the resolution is reflected when printed tomorrow.
Thank you very much, anyone else? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
No movement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.[1784.24]